I stand on our mayor's time for this report.
Well, welcome, everybody. I'm so sorry.
Welcome to you, Mayor.
I'm so sorry. Ramona, coming up with all kinds of good ideas back there. Well, I guess we'll start with reviews of the trash and recycling contract that is up in May.
Is somebody gonna call Guy?
The proposals and in here, so.
I don't think I have his number.
Do you have his number, Mayor?
I have everyone, I think.
Do you have any?
I don't know if I have.
I don't know.
Let me see. I've got almost everybody's number on my phone.
I need to. That's something. Maybe can you send us next week every once in a while?
Well, when I go get a new phone, they just about die at T-Mobile when they see how many people I've got in my file. Because everybody that calls me, I put them in as a contract.
You want me to start?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm starting.
No, but if you guys don't care, I'd like to have all your numbers and then we could remind each other.
Yeah, I'll do that.
We've got his picture on here.
I've got your number, Peggy. I have yours, too. But I don't think I have mine.
Okay, so the city and probably Diane could give us even more of a history than I can of the trash and stuff, but it looks like from the files, yeah, Betty was here. The files, it looks like back in 2002 roughly when the city started the recycling and the trash program. And so over the years, it's been extended and things like that, but I noticed that, of course, it started, did CCU A start doing it and then Stutzman bought them out? Somehow CCU A is gonna do something.
We did it as a recycling volunteer thing down at the building.
Okay.
Maintenance building, we set up cardboard boxes.
And then Steve Meyer from the Newton area was the first contract. But he was underfunded or something. He had problems, you know, getting a lot of the receptacles out.
Doing good. Just wanted to make sure you're okay and see if you're gonna come up to the workshop. Okay.
Without anybody else's knowledge, or maybe the council knew, I don't know, but, you know, nobody had contracted me about it. They just, you know, shifted the contract to somebody else and I think it was.
Turn it on now. It was actually, we were a few minutes late, but it should be on now. We just got started, so.
Embarrassing.
And then we'll connect with you afterwards. Get it sent better soon then, okay?
Which was part of the delay of getting it passed through. They had sued the city and me. Personally, I still have that. If you ever do a history of the city, I want that published.
It's in the history book.
So then, so then at some point, Stutzman's took over and then Stutzman's ran it, so probably, yeah. They sold to Waste Connections. And so the council had done some additions to the original agreement, I think, when Waste Connection started. But I was looking at the contract and expires May 17th, I believe. And so I know we had had conversations about, Betty had brought up one time, be nice to have a toilet down at the Bel Air Park since, you know, people can't use the gas station.
Fire station.
Fire station. And there was the question about the big roll-off at the city, at the city shop because, you know, they pick up stuff in the ditches and stuff and we were paying for that. And so I thought this would be a good time to maybe look at who's out there, who's interested, what kind of program, what kind of prices we could get. So it requires 60 days notice to terminate, so that's why I started this process so that we can, you know, or council can make a decision, probably maybe at the next meeting if you're comfortable. And so I created an RFP and I included that in your packet. And there's a lot of legalese and stuff that you may not be interested in seeing, but the meat of it comes in the bag where what I'd also done is I contacted several other cities around to see who they used and what kind of programs they had and copies of their contracts. So I could see what everybody else over the last few years had been getting in their contracts. So I took everything that I could think of and what others were getting and threw it in here. For example, you know, all the trash at all the city facilities, they've been free and so wanted to keep that. The roll-off at Public Works, we had to pay for that and so I threw that in there that we wanted that free. We wanted during, basically, spring, fall and summer, a handicap restroom at the park. The porta-potties that we use at the rec center, we've had to pay for those, so I said, we want those free. We needed the additional porta-potties for our spring and fall events, additional trash, those things we had to pay for. The pools included in there. One thing we had talked about is we had one community cleanup day and they would bring in the trucks or the roll-offs and people just have to take them up to the brush side. And I noticed someone had a curbside where they'd actually go around the city. Some of them had two of them, so I put in there, let's do two of them curbside.
Nice.
And then, of course, of course, the shredding, that's something that we've been doing, so we were able to continue that.
Would that bother the Lions Club? Don't they usually put on that shredding thing?
Yeah, but I mean, it's, they always provide it and then the Lions Club works with them.
Oh, wow.
They're the labor force. Stands out there and helps us unload our TVs and stuff.
Yeah, they facilitate and run.
Right.
It's awesome.
And then, you know, they provide us with maps and schedules. Then I wanted to know, you know, what their holidays are. We wanted to make sure they had an office hours because everybody usually contacts them with issues with trash. And so sent this out to 16 different trash haulers.
I didn't know we had that many.
I didn't either.
We don't, no error if they give them one.
Well, if they wanted to, they could come out here.
I went to the city of Wichita because, see, they don't, you know, they don't have a preferred vendor.
Yeah, they let everybody.
So they list everybody that, so that's where I got the list and there were 16 of them.
They don't do the wonderful recycling like you do.
Right, they don't do that either.
Well, on the west side, they do, because Brian does and he's mandatory to do recycling.
Oh, I love it, love it, yeah.
So sent those out. We got two back, one from Waste Connections and one from Waste Management. On, and those were included in your packet. On March 3rd, there were some, we had some questions after we reviewed these. We had a few questions. Both of them had mentioned that, you know, we said the exclusive provider. And what we were talking about was the preferred provider who the city would have their citizens recognize, but they wouldn't get all of the business. And what's interesting, we use that term because several of the other cities have that term in their agreement and they don't require them to use their trash hauler.
But they copied that from us.
Yeah, yeah. So I explained that to them. Waste Management, they were fine. Or no, I'm sorry, Waste Connections was fine with that. They understood because they work with us now. Waste Management, they wanted to come back and give a different price because they didn't understand that it would be 2,400 roughly. I think we have 2,700 accounts or something. There's just a couple hundred that don't. So they wanted to adjust their prices. So in the memo, that's where those prices come from. So if you looked at Waste Man.
They want to charge more?
Yeah.
Way more.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, just, I mean, compare the $8 to $5, $8 to $3 and a quarter.
Yeah. And then we ask them if they had a recycling program with any types of rewards or points like Waste Connection does and they don't. They just have a kind of like a education part of their recycling. It's not points like we get with Waste Connection. And then we also asked them, because Waste Connection said that they would do a seven or 10 year, we asked them if they'd like to give us numbers on a seven or 10 year. They declined to do that.
That is a long time to lock yourself in.
Yes.
I'm impressed that they did that.
Because I don't see these prices going down in seven or 10 years.
Me either. I'm impressed. As a business, I wouldn't want to do that.
Me either.
So let's go back.
Well, even if they sell the business, they still have to stick by that. Whoever buys it still has to stick by that 10-year contract. And.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Because when a business is bought, they buy existing contracts.
Hooked would be a buy.
Because right now, I'm using a 65 gallon and it's costing me 12.65 and a 4 ga, 95 gallon recycle and it's $4. So right now, I'm paying 16.65 for trash and recycling.
So this is gonna go down then if we do this?
Well, that kind of depends because I asked Ty before the meeting and they, you know, like, I forget what their trash thing was for 10 years, but they, the city pads that, is all the better word I can think of. It's because we raised it to even numbers for calculations and that type of stuff. And it averages out to be about 4,000 a year that we collect on trash and recycling. And I think it was about that amount. And then they put it in sewer and water. But for the 10-year price, we could, I assume we could talk later about lowering the price of the trash for the 95 and maybe just keep the recycling and the, you know, I don't know how you want to do it because, like I said, right now, I pay 16.65 and I went to the small one and I'd like to go back to the big one because not too long ago, I picked up some sticks and I put them in a heavy yellow bag, put it on top of my little cart, took it to the street and he left me a note that the next time he would, he picked it up this time, the bag, but next time I'd get charged.
He took the time to write you that note?
Yeah.
Well, I, that's happened to me.
And I saw.
This never happens.
I think they're four, they're four notes.
On a 65 gallon trash, you can't have bags. None.
Oh, yeah.
See, on the big ones.
On the big one, you can have three bags. Well, you tell me how you set three bags on top of a 95 gallon cart.
Well, I'll tell you, there's a lot of times, because in my house, I thought about, oh, I need a smaller one, but then I do yard work or something.
Me too, because this one, Mike's not even got the two bags.
Yeah, yeah, today it's not even half full.
Me either.
But to me, it's worth it because, but I put the three bags out next to them. They always picking up.
But you got a 95 gallon thing.
But are you talking, it's only a dollar a week difference or a dollar a month? For the bigger, or Betty, how much would it be if you went to the 95? Would it be a dollar?
Right now, it's, I think it's $14 and something a cart for the 95. And I'm paying.
That's what I think.
12.65 for mine.
Okay, so a couple dollars a month.
It's just $2 that I'm saving. But like today, I didn't even put my trash out because I only have one bag in there. But when spring and summer comes.
You're gonna have a lot.
I'm gonna have a lot. And I would just, I would rather go for the 10-year.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Especially if we can get a bathroom at the portable restroom at the Bel Air Park.
And it goes down a dollar fifty?
It goes down and you're locked in because gas won't stay this low for 10 years.
Could you imagine if we can announce to the city, hey, your trash bills are not going to go up for 10 years?
That's amazing.
Is there a fuel surcharge inherent in here?
We'll have to look at it. Yeah, what I'd like for you to do, they said that the rates are good for at least, well, five years for the five-year. We'll have to find out on the 10-year.
That's a good point.
Now, they did include in, both of them included that, they used to include in fuel charges. This time they didn't. It was the transfer charges. Those go, they want to pass those along. So.
So gotta be careful when we announce that.
So, yeah, and both of them did that. And, yeah, and so I don't know that they'll go 10 years with no raises, but.
You're right, because it's gonna cost a lot more to use that though.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do is, is at the council meeting next Tuesday, it's for you to decide which proposal you like and accept the proposal and then instruct staff to start negotiating a contract so that we can then get all of this stuff in there and make sure that we're, maybe have that to you by April. In fact, the nice thing is Waste Connections, which it looks like, you know, they may be the ones that give it, they said that if they were selected, they could start it maybe in April before the actual contract ends so we could start seeing some savings immediately.
The thing I like the most about it is those porta-potties, parties, because it's actually the firemen that ask us to do something for the people that needed to go to the restroom at that wonderful park that is always busy.
Yep.
That's awesome.
And, you know, I just think that is wonderful that we could provide that for the people who use that park and for all the other events, but that especially, because that's something that has bothered me ever since the fireman told us about it, you know.
And that's good too.
Little kids will walk over there. They've already wet their pants.
Boy, the fire department doesn't need to be bothered with providing, you know, because an emergency call comes in and they've got little junior.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, but I tell you, the older guys that are on duty will always let those children go to the bath. The younger ones won't.
We got a copy of their contract, but that's the other thing I want to look at is, before we go talking about rates, is to determine, you know, see what everybody else is charging to.
Because, you know, I mean, D Store, depends on what day it is, okay, with her. But we were the first to have a citywide type of thing. And as you can see, much of this was copied off of, you know, the making it mandatory that you pay. You know, if you want to go somewhere else, you can, but you're still gonna pay. And, but Park City, the last I knew, had the lowest rates of anybody. And that's probably because, you know, she did the negotiation.
Yeah, that was probably coming, that was 05 to 09. She's, they're probably getting renegotiating, renegotiating too. Getting close.
Probably, but they had lower rates than we did, which always sort of torqued me just a little bit because I didn't get a chance.
Because we're just as big as they are.
And so, yeah, but I'm kind of like you. I'm, 10 years is a long time to make a promise for anything.
I'd have to take advantage of it.
Yeah, well, even if something comes up and you have to change it after five years, at least you got five years out of it. But I've always been under the assumption that anytime you sell a company and you have a contract, they've got to stand behind that contract. Now, I could be wrong.
Right, okay, okay. So starting here, rollout and all this, this applies to all of them? Because I never knew I could put out a bulky item for $15. I would gladly put out an old thing that I don't want halved that. $15, is that right now? Do we have that?
No.
Actually, well.
That's awesome.
Where are you seeing for $15?
Bulky items here on page nine. I'm asking him if this is just if we do 23 or if this goes with all or did this get just added?
It goes with all, though.
I did not know that.
Let me tell you, there were twice in the past year, for different reasons, that I had a ton of, I cleaned out a storage locker and some other junk. And I called them and yet it was a $15 fee and the trash man, actually, they have a little, it looks like a mini dumpster. It comes off, they put it in and you fill it up.
We have it right now?
You have to call them in advance, but I've called twice. It was $15.
Oh, man, I didn't know that. You have to have a truck.
Yeah, yeah, because it, which is 15.
It's worth it.
One was $25 because I had something else. But, yeah, that's. You can't drive to the dump.
You can't be free on it, stuff like that, but I'm talking about, like, an old chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, why can't you put that up the curbside collection?
An old chair?
She could.
Because through out the city of Bel Air, of hazardous, non-hazardous materials.
But that would be twice a year, so spring and fall.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Normally, you don't throw a chair away every week.
But I put out a old thing once and they didn't take it.
No.
So I had to put it in the church van and trash hole and all.
I think you can call, just call in advance, yes.
We should tell our people.
The other thing I would just like to point out, when we were first talking a few months ago that, oh, this is gonna come up, I thought, oh, boy, because anytime, new contracts, I've never seen one come back for less than what you're currently paying. Never.
They want to keep our business.
Yeah, I think they do.
They got it made in the shade. Jamie does all the billing for them and they send her a bill and tell her what to pay.
So, all righty.
It is a sweet deal for them. And.
I'd like to say this was very well done and this was good because we had all the information we need and so.
I think we can make a decision too, Steve, if you guys. Yeah, I didn't have any real problems.
Neither.
And like I said, it'll be, the action will be just to accept the proposal and we'll come back with the contract.
Just don't raise customers' rates.
No, no.
Right, right, right.
I agree. Well, yeah, that's, we don't want to go really kind of pushing that out.
Anybody say that they object now, now, to the $4 trash, or recycling. But boy, when it started, I thought, oh my god.
I have received, I have received one phone call.
I need to go to the bar.
I received, I received many phone calls.
Well, Diane, I will thank you because when I moved to Bel Air a number of years ago, I remember setting up the trash and I was handing those clear bags and I said, what's that for? And they said, you put all your recycling in. And I went, oh, my gosh.
This is great.
You should have been here when we had that first guy. You had to separate everything in them old white tubs.
I have white tubs still. It's a great thing to do.
I do, too.
It's a great, yeah.
And I put my pockets.
You cannot break it.
But the wind would downwood one and I have to go look for it. It was awful.
Yeah, a couple of you didn't get any of the fun at the maintenance shop.
It was funny.
Set that up and, and, you know.
That poor man, Billy, he worked hard, but he just couldn't make it.
No, and he's still struggling.
Is he really?
Yeah, he's selling out.
Well, let's talk about policies next. We'll move on from utilities. We do have two drafts in our packet here. The first one is on the rules of order that we've talked about quite a bit. To me, I think we're finally ready, but wanted to kind of have some discussion here beforehand if we're not to move forward with adopting that and then talk a little bit more about REAP and the tax led resolution.
And Ramona helped me with this. She had kind of taken notes and some of her comments and stuff and the REAP order thing, so I took care of all of that. And so I think, I think everything between Ramona and I, and I think I might have helped some. I think we've got it, but I wanted to make sure that there's nothing else we need to change.
There was just two little things I saw in here. One of them was when the word person was used for member. I think whenever we're talking about the council members, we should use the word member. And, you know, I ran off and left my notes at home for this, but I'll email you and let you know. There was just two little places and otherwise it was an excellent job.
Okay.
And so I really do appreciate this because I think this makes it so much easier to read and understand. And the formatting does, makes a world of difference. There's all kinds of studies about that, how important formatting is for documents, for readability, understandability. And that's what we're really going for here is so that it's something that's easy to use and something that's easy to understand.
Yep.
So I appreciate it.
What's the real change, do you see, and, I don't know, I'm not opposed to either. I'm just wondering, what's the real change in this? Because as you read through it, it sounds so much like Robert's Rules of Order. What is the real?
Oh, Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, I understand, I have, I have a book on my desk.
This is the Cliff Notes version of stuff you'll actually, you'll actually get to in Robert's Rules for the most part.
Right, and I got books. I've got a little mini Robert's condensed one on my desk. But what I'm asking, as I'm reading through this, it looks like this, like, I think that's a good word to use, Cliff Notes. It looks like it's very much the same, right? Was there any major thing?
I think the thing that's nicest about this is this, this is more specific to our purpose as a city council, because this was actually devised by a person who's an expert in this field and in city business and attorney that does this all the time. And it just makes it easier to understand and I think this is especially good, like when we have new council members. This will make it so easy for them to read and understand, rather than try and sit down and read Robert's Rules of Order. Not everybody's familiar with that, you know? And so I just think this is much easier to use and read. I really like it.
Yeah, well, and the thing I think would be good, and I know Mayor tries to, like, when it says, like, give an equal time, and I don't think we want to set a clock, but maybe, you know, like when we have it, maybe after four or five minutes, move to the next, the next, and come back around, kind of, to get it going, you know, so we all can speak on a thing. I think, I mean, it outlines it. I think it's really good.
I think they should speak as long as they need to.
Well, this says, well, this says that you are going to get equal time to express your views and, so you'd have to let them all have like five minutes, five minutes, they keep coming around. I don't think you should ever limit.
But like the time, if you say, okay, you got five minutes and I don't use my five minutes, you're gonna sit there for five minutes in silence?
No, that's what I said. I don't think we're due, but I think instead of like me having a person and me asking like 20 questions, I should maybe ask five, you ask five, her five, her five, guy five. Then we come back around instead of, because isn't that how this reads, that we do that?
No, I don't, I don't think it's prescriptive like that. I think what it's saying is, it's the mayor's responsibility or the chairperson to recognize that if somebody has had the floor for five minutes or seven minutes or even 10 minutes, then if somebody else wants the floor to respond to that, they should be given an equal amount of time.
Yeah, okay.
So it doesn't have to be prescriptive.
Right, no, we're saying the same thing. That's what I'm saying. So like if you're talking, like, let's say you had 10 minutes and then the three of us are anxiously wanting to, the mayor would say, okay, thank you, we'll get back to you if you want to, Dr. Becker. Let's move on and let you have a few minutes and you, and you, because.
No, that's not what it's saying at all. It's not to cut off anybody.
I don't want to cut off anybody either. I'm just saying, the way it reads, and maybe I don't understand it, is that we all get to have some time to do it. I don't think we ever want to cut off anyone. If you need 20 minutes, but I'm just saying, maybe Mayor could say after 10, okay, could we move on? No?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, because I think sometimes.
You let her finish what she's saying is the way I get it.
See, I don't read it that way.
And then the mayor asks if there's anybody else that has questions, because sometimes, I don't ask any questions up front of the bench, or you don't.
And that's okay.
And stuff like that, so.
I guess my question is, what happens if, that we're talking and he recognizes me first and then I never let you guys have a chance?
We'll sit here all night because I'm gonna say what I want to say.
And that's the point of it.
Right, whoever he recognized, I'm just thinking, because sometimes it's hard for people if they have to stand here and answer, I just, I don't know. I just think if we all kind of just share, be, just be conscious of it and everyone, I agree with you guys. Everybody should get to ask as much as they want. It's our council. I don't want to cut people off either. I just want to give everybody time.
If there, there's, I don't read anything here, and not that anyone sitting at this table would ever do that, but if, if they begin to ramble.
Or filibuster.
And saying the same thing over and over.
Or if they are not germane to the topic, if they get wandering off. That's different.
Do we actually have something that, you know?
Yeah, the point, the, something at the point of.
Yeah, that's covered in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I say, guys, this, you know, at first, I was like, you know, Bob's rules, Bob's rules, but you know what? It's the Cliff Notes version, Robert's rules, oh, my gosh. There's not a scenario that isn't.
Is our attorney, okay? Has she read this? Okay.
She knows Bob Meyer who did this.
I know who he is, too, yeah.
And she told me that he used to teach this and he's still going to be teaching it again. So he's an expert in the field. That's why they had him come to the league.
Yeah, I was studying on his stuff a couple times.
Right, I was very impressed.
I just wanted to make sure she, because I know she made a comment that she hadn't read through all of it. I just want to make sure she was good with it.
Oh, at this point, she has, yeah.
Good, okay.
I don't have any problem with it.
Anybody else? We'll have that on the agenda as well then, okay?
Maybe we should just keep these on our desk up there.
We could.
That's actually a very good idea, yeah.
Can I just put my name in? That way, if we ever have a question.
That's the beauty of it, because you can easily look something up.
I know, it's so simple. I'm gonna leave it up there.
Okay, the next-ish item is, this is something that was requested. Okay, the next-ish item is, um, this is something that was requested by REAP, which we're members of, obviously. Um, and you've probably heard, you know about the tax lead that was approved last year, and it's supposed to start in 2018, which means in the 2017 budget, we will have to consider that, as it sits now. And there are some exemptions in there. However, there, they were meeting today, I think they were having hearings on making some changes to it again. So we're not sure what may come out of that. We've heard that certain people wanted to start immediately, so 2016, which is very difficult for us. Um, and so REAP put together this, um, resolution and another, another number of cities have signed it. And basically just, it requests that the, the legislature actually repeal that and let the cities make their own decisions. And if you read through it, it talks about, there's, there's several issues with it. One is the, the one that requires an election if the city's going to go above CPI. Um, and, and the tough thing, and, and we put this together, our staff, just to kind of help, um, citizens and anybody that asked. Um, but the thing that we're afraid of is, you know, they're tying this to CPI, which is goods and services. Well, we don't buy goods and services typically. I mean, we provide police protection, we provide street repairs, those kind of things. And so as, and, and as you can see, we are really growing, um, with, uh, uh, utility customers and new homes. And so that brings in additional tax revenue for us. Well, if we're, so we may have to, because we bring on a thousand new people, we may have to hire another police officer, uh, but that's because of the growth of our community, not CPI. And so that's the biggest scare that we have is, and then at that point, you, you know, if you want to raise it a mill to pay for another police officer, because we've grown a thousand people, then it'd have to go to an election. So then the city's got to pay to have an election. Um, and so, and I think really at the end of the day, the biggest piece is, it talks about the bottom, that, um, are actually, uh, uh, yeah, where, it's one of the whereas is, um, you know, citizens of Bel Air elect you all to make those decisions.
That's right. Absolutely.
And if you say, we're not, if we're going to cut the mill, we're going to cut the mill. If you say, we need three police officers, we're going to raise it. And they can call you or stop and talk to you and, and give you their opinion. And if they totally don't like it, then you may not be reelected. But it's all done, you know, locally, rather than the state telling us how to operate our budget and stuff. So, um, so I read through it and I, and I thought it was, you know, certainly, I, I'm in favor of repealing it, just so that we can, can maintain that control of our budget and our services we provide. So if you're comfortable with this, I'll put this on and we'll send it to all of our legislators and the council actually took official action and adopted a resolution.
I am so happy to see this and I just wish we would have done it sooner, you know?
Well, it's changing. Uh, you mentioned, so I, this is on my tablet here. This is in the Capital Journal. They put it up about four hours ago. An article that said, "Supporters of accelerating the implementation of a property tax-led argue Tuesday that a shortened timeline will fight current incent- incentive cities and counties have to boost taxes." That's just typo, okay. "An analysis by the city of Pika urges lawmakers to allow local governments to retain control over taxes. However, it says cuts at the state level have affected the city. The Senate Tax Committee is weighing a proposal to move up the effective date passed by lawmakers last year to later this year. Currently, it will go into effect in 2018." Um, but they say here, "The business groups, along with realtors lined up in favor during the hearing, with opponents scheduled to make their cases Wednesday," so tomorrow.
And that's at the committee. So if you would approve this next Tuesday, we'd get it out Wednesday. So it's got to go, you know, if it gets out of the committee, then it's got to go to the House and the Senate both. So, um, we can get it to our representatives before, unless they're on the committee.
They'll talk tomorrow. Are you up there?
I'm not up there. I'm up here Thursday.
Maybe you can stop and talk to them.
Yeah. Well.
He doesn't have time.
Well, I can make time if I need to for something like that. I, I just, yeah, hate the state controlling us and telling us what we can do and.
Well, and then the other thing that just recently happened, um, I heard about last week, is, is they're looking at if, if our fines, you know, police fines go above ten percent, we got to send it to them.
Yeah. As soon, uh, when that happens, I'd just as soon give everybody a warning ticket.
Yeah.
We took in no money.
They can't depend on us to make up for their budget mistakes and difficulties because they needed to take care of that themselves.
And then they'll wonder where their, their lease housing fees went. You're going to take anybody to jail.
All right, well, moving right along, let's talk about marketing, the, the mission review.
We, um.
Oh, man, I don't remember this.
Yeah, well, we were talking about it earlier. Um, as, as we improve our budget document and the marketing and stuff that we do, we wanted to look at our mission statement for, what, what is our mission statement for the city? What is it for each department? And so I had each department look at their own, what's their mission and stuff, and to come up with some ideas. But an, an overall city mission, I think that really needs to come from the governing body. And so this is what, and Betty asked me, this is what we've had for I don't know how long. And so it, so I thought, let's, you know, maybe we throw it out and start over, maybe we adjust it. I don't know. But I, I think that it would be very helpful for you all to help create the, the city mission.
I think we need to throw it out and start over. I don't even know where this came from.
It was here before I got here. So, yeah, it's.
And I don't even think they put it in effect, have they, Peggy?
I don't even remember this.
Nobody, because I was tied, this, who signed it? It's not signed.
This is the first time I remember seeing it.
Do cities have mission statements?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but I was here twenty-eight years and I don't remember it.
Did it have a date of this at all?
No, I think, you know.
I don't ever remember seeing this.
In fact, it, it could have been just.
When they incorporated?
Or, you know, maybe the, one of the city administrators created it.
Where'd you find it?
Uh, we've just had it forever and, and we haven't really used it.
It had to be before nineteen eighty.
Oh, my goodness.
So.
Mission City Bel Air stuff. Keep local control.
This is a very long mission statement.
Yes.
Do you remember it? No, I don't. But, uh, yeah, I was just gonna, sorry.
Yeah, you just need to take out that middle part.
Well, it, you know, mission statements now are, are more just, you know, three words or, uh, you know, or longer. But a sentence, this has, how many sentences in there or is it one?
Not very many. There's no way.
It's one run-on sentence.
Yeah, I, I think honestly, guys.
I'm looking for a period.
I think we can put a period after community and take off that second part, the mission of City Bel Air.
I think that ought to come back to this is, uh, for a review or whatever, tie things needs to write it up as and let it, because I don't know where this came from.
I think if you did, this is how most of them read now, like, you put, "The mission of Bel, the City of Bel Air is to work together to provide a safe, clean, attractive community, um, that enhances the excellence quality of life for residents and visitors." And you just leave it something like that, a one sentence. You don't need to say how you're going to do it. You just say, you want to say the very first thing. You always want to say, here's our thing. We're going to provide a clean, safe, attractive community. For who? For the residents and visitors, period. That's all you want. You don't need.
To me, you leave off the mission even.
Really? Most schools, like you walk in, the mission is to.
Well, it'll say, "Mission statement, colon, the City of Bel Air."
You just want to say, "We're together to provide a clean, safe, attractive community to enhance quality of life for its citizens."
Yeah.
Well, I don't even.
Something you can remember.
I don't even like, "safe, clean, and attractive" or "clean" in there. That's tacky to me, you know?
Okay, so "safe and affordable" or "safe and appealing." You just think of another adjective then.
I haven't had a time to really look at this.
Yeah, we need to look at all this.
And, uh, so I think we all need to think about it, you know? And, uh, I will tell you, as an educator, I have spent hundreds of hours working on mission statements.
Okay.
I do too. I got to write hours.
And, and you can wordsmith these things to death. And I don't think we need to do that.
It's got to be something you can remember though. Like, it's got to be short enough that you can remember it when someone says, what is your mission? You want to provide a safe community for everyone who lives there. I bet you want to say with words that grasp a nice feeling.
Right.
Let me, if, if I may.
You can all work on it.
We're all sitting here going, we didn't even know we had this mission. So how long ago was it? So I don't want to.
Shame on us. We probably should have known.
Well, 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 let me, let me just say this, to, to piggyback on, on what Councilman Becker said, let's not kill ourselves. I have sat through meeting after meeting after meeting with not-for-profits and we change this word or we make this adjective that says the same thing. And then it's a mission statement that's put in the annual report and nothing else has ever changed. But by God, we've just lost a whole lot of hours making sure that we have a one-sentence mission statement. So I'm thinking out loud here, what about if we each just brought a?
Brought one to us at our next workshop.
Brought a one, a one-liner to the next one and let's just vote on the best one and bother.
And then we just frame it.
No, unintended.
Ty listened to our conversation and he could just write it up and if we're not happy with it, it goes down.
Yeah, we really don't like the words.
Well, you've got an opportunity to make a whole new thing, is, is what I'm hearing you really say.
It's got to be way shorter than this.
But, yeah, I mean, that's the first thing.
Do you mind if we send Ty some ideas?
Yeah, no, please.
Well, whatever he writes will be okay with me unless he says I'm bad or something.
Because, you know, so like I said, that's like everybody's saying.
It's got to be easy.
We haven't used it. Because it's, you know, you look at it, even a brochure, it takes up half the page. And it's like, we need something, a one-liner that we can really attach to everything.
I'm surprised he even found it.
Me too. I've never seen that.
Right, right.
So let's each send, if you want to, a suggestion to Ty. Ty, do you want to come up with one or two?
You should tie that in, our motto. You could tie your motto into your mission statement. A lot of people do.
With respect first past, absolutely.
You could tie that in.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying.
And that would make everybody happy.
The mission of Bel Air is to be a city of.
I mean, that's your motto. And if you just say, the mission is.
To be a city of the future with respect to its past.
For the past.
What do you think?
Sounds good to me.
You can always tie in your motto in these.
Well, yeah, but it's a motto. You know, it's not a mission, it's a motto.
Right, but. It is. Our mission's very similar. You have respect for all.
Why don't we do this, since we don't need to.
We all got to send it.
Yeah. We, we, this isn't something we have to rush and settle at the next meeting. Why don't we, in the next, next week or two, send one or two? Ty, maybe in your weekly update prior to our, um, the first meeting in April, and maybe we put on the, you know, have, um, or you know what? No, let's just talk about it at our next workshop. Why don't you bring three or four options and let's winnow it down to one that we can put on the agenda. What do you guys think? Ladies?
Workshop is fine.
Can I ask you something?
Yeah.
I don't know how much time you have, but I know at school, when we were redoing our mission statement, we sent out to teachers that were interested in helping. I would be very curious if you asked some of the staff, and they don't have to, but what would they think that as a city, as us, as governing body, what would they think that we're trying to promote as our city? Because they're in here every day with the citizens. I'd just be curious to see if they're on the same wavelength that we're thinking. Because they're here every day, working with the public. If you would say, what would you think if, you know, what would you think the mission is as you're working here in this company? I'm just kind of curious. And don't make them give you input, but if they want to jot down, because sometimes they got a lot of insight, because they're here every day.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we could do that. What if also, along the same line, what if we used our social media and just tweeted out? Help us come up with a.
I thought about that, but I don't want to know we don't have one.
The difficulty you run into sometimes, some people don't understand mission statements at all.
And if someone takes a ton of time and we get thirty-eight days and they're not fixed.
And we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. And they think, feel like they're, what, their ideas are rejected or something like that, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's, it, it's better to ask maybe in a different way, like, what are some of the most important things we do for you or something like that?
Well, and we did that, you know, the fire hydrer downstairs. Tristan put words.
Yes, that, that's a good, that's a good way to do it. I think that would.
What words you think of the Bel Air?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, that would fulfill our purpose better because then we're not asking somebody to put away effort and time in a sentence.
Right.
And again, this, again, guys, this is a one-line mission statement that isn't going to change our lives one way or the other, really.
Right, I like that.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's going to be fun to retweet and work on it.
Like I said, bring, bring the samples at, to the April workshop and I would imagine the few minutes of discussion, we can winnow it down to one or two of our favorites.
It'll be fun.
And then at the April workshop, we'll also bring the information about the rates, so that you guys can start looking at the rate, the trash rates and stuff. Because we'll have a contract by then, we'll know what our fees are and stuff.
That's perfect.
And by then, you probably need to tell us what to raise or, I would like to see the, the recent, the trash and the recycling stay at that price that.
Me too.
He gave, at least for a little while. Because we don't, you know, with the residents, you could probably, uh, you know, you could go for that ten-year, what he charged, because we've got the budget coming up. What, do we start that in May, April?
Probably, well, the other thing we want to do in April is, um, we won't, we want to come to you first and get, before we start crafting the budget, and get some of your thoughts on, you know, what are some things you'd like to see in the budget?
Oh, boy, you don't like that.
And, and, well, no, that's what we need. And then that way we can put the budget together and then come back to you and say, okay, you wanted these things, this is how we can do that. And maybe that would be a little more helpful, is kind of what we were thinking, to, to get more input. So we don't just bring a budget to you and then, you know, you ask questions, we can do this, we can do that. Get your ideas first, maybe we can incorporate them.
Sounds good.
Okay, I have a couple, real, real, real quick things. Uh, remind everybody, there's a SCAC meeting this Saturday at eight-thirty.
I told her I was going to try to talk somebody in to go. I'm in, um, it's national qualifiers at collegiate from eight to five.
It's my goddaughter's birthday, so.
Anybody going?
I can't go because I already got commitments.
It looked like a pretty basic agenda, to be honest with you. It didn't look like a twenty-eight hour chat or anything.
I looked at my, my calendar and I don't have an event I have to go to that morning, but I've got a whole list of things that I need to get done and I need to have time to do them. I'd really like to go. For one thing, I love the historical museum.
Yeah.
Well, I just love that we get represented. Like when I went a couple of months ago, it's just nice that our presence is there.
I can probably go, as long as it's over. I, my, I'm going to have another great-granddaughter.
Woo, congratulations.
That day? That day?
No, we're having a baby shower for her, my granddaughter.
Oh, cool.
Well, the, the agenda.
I'm not, I'm not missing that.
They're usually over by ten-thirty.
Yeah. And this one I think will be.
It is sometimes nine-thirty.
And you can always leave it early on.
You can sneak out. I've snuck out before if it starts getting long. Because sometimes when they go around the city and talk, some people go on and on and you sneak out.
Yeah.
Ramble?
So look at your Bel Air email so you see that. Um, the other thing, is anybody else?
I did.
Bring a review?
Oh, no, I didn't. I need an extension.
I do, I do too.
I left mine at home, so I'll bring it up and then you'll open it up in your box.
Or, or bring it to the next meeting, um, or if you come up beforehand.
It was long.
Yeah.
Well, I just undermined a bunch of stuff and I said, look up above.
Yeah, you're going to see it because I wrote stuff.
Does the mayor notice any fines at all?
No, uh, what's going to happen? Yeah, uh.
We're just going to make him nervous.
Counsel, President.
I want him to see. I wrote a lot of stuff.
Well, well, Council President McDonald and I will sit down and we won't open these until then. That's why they're anonymous.
I know, I sealed it. You want me to put my initials on it?
No, I do not.
Now you can't.
Oh, great. So God watching all my tribe. But, uh, that way, and then we'll compile and take all that in and then.
Thank you.
Well, I already told him I didn't give him a good one, because I gave him an excellent last two years.
I forgot to combine, pile at the end and divide by twenty. Can you just do that for me? I'm so sorry.
We'll do it, yeah.
Did God say he was sick or?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, Mr. McDonald's not able to make it tonight, so it's.
I better do that.
I have a couple others, guys. Can I bring them up under your other?
Sure.
Yeah, um, and then the other.
Go ahead and finish what you have.
One thing real quick, I was going to say, just number two, if you saw from last meeting, um, the next meeting, we're going to ask for names for the ad hoc historical committee. So if you have names for that.
What's that?
To work on the book or something.
Yeah, so we can put a committee together so every council member can present a name and then we can put that committee together that works with, uh, Jade.
Oh, Jay Price, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
He liked, by the way, he liked that idea. Because that way he's got a group that he, and, and that group will kind of oversee what goes in and what doesn't go in and things like that. So he, he really liked, he appreciated it.
I'm sure there's some people in town that would love to do that.
I've done my time with him. Did anybody read the five chapters that were written?
Yes. I haven't had time yet.
I didn't get through all of them. I didn't get through all of them.
I remember, guys, that was a first draft.
Well, I know that he does a great job and so I really have a lot of confidence in him and. I think that we probably have some people here in town who would be wonderful to serve on that committee, to work with him on that. People that have lived here longer than any of us probably.
Well, most of us are gone.
Well, think of a name and we'll get it going, we don't wanna lose, we don't wanna lose out on that member here. And I think Betty, you said you had a couple of things you wanted to bring up?
Well, I just had thought about some things, you know, Christmas is nine months away and I, years ago, and Diane would remember. Uh, we used to, uh, have the houses, the people that decorated their houses. Then we had two outside people come around and judge those houses and we gave first and third, first, second, third prize. Do you remember that?
Nope.
I remember when I first.
Was that before your time?
No.
And then we had, we gave them, uh.
I'm not a decorator.
Well, this was when we were in the fire station. And the maintenance men went and got some, some of that fine sand and I can't remember who we got the paper sacks from. But we, uh, gave, they could bring a bucket up to the fire station and get a bucket full of sand. From the city that didn't cost anything, because a bunch of us just chipped in money to buy the sand, the sand and the sacks. And then we ordered tea lights from, by the groves.
And luminaries.
And we did all luminaries for every household. And they lit them at dark on Christmas Eve and blew them out at ten o'clock. Well, I kept thinking, okay, fire. Maybe we could find someplace that we could find those little tea lights that you just flip the switch on the bottom that don't have a flame. But they would still go in that paper sack. It's a battery on.
Yeah, College Hill has, there's.
And they still work after they get wet, because mine did this year, cause I do.
You couldn't get them at Dollar Tree.
I do, uh.
Well, for every household, I think it'd be cheaper to buy it by the groves. Maybe that HR, where they order stuff or. I'm not sure where they order supplies and stuff from, but, or even, I don't know, some candle shop would use a discount.
How many would you order?
I wouldn't think they'd have to have that many.
How many would you give per household?
Well, probably is.
For up and down their drive? Or just one?
Oh, no, you give them all to fill the sacks. And I don't think we spent over, back, of course, now I'm talking in the eighties and I don't think we spent over, uh, three, three hundred dollars doing that. And that included the sand, the sacks and the, uh, lights.
My kids, my kids were little then and they loved doing that.
Oh, it's beautiful. I don't know, there should be a picture somewhere in City Hall that's got the flyover, all of them lit up.
Hopefully the history community will cover that picture and that's something I, I wrote down, we could have a community development committee working that. What's that?
Yeah, maybe they could help us.
Oh, absolutely, I think.
Distribute, think of ways to get donations.
Yeah, and we, well, we've got.
Well, I don't even think it's gonna, if it cost even a thousand dollars, if the whole, everybody in Bel Air did it. I think it would be great.
I do too.
That, because used to back then, we didn't have as many houses as, well, we didn't have Central Park and those places. I'm not even sure we had Eagle Lake.
No.
We didn't have. We didn't have very many in Appleman's, cause he had just started. And, uh.
My house wasn't there yet.
I know those people south wasn't there.
Wow, mine was built in eighty-six.
But I remember that we'd go out and, uh.
You have a lot more houses.
Oh, yeah.
Well, all right, well, well, let's put that on.
Cool.
But I thought maybe that committee or whatever wanted to do that. And the other thing is. And I know, I'm not trying to dictate or tell you what to do on these committees, but, uh, for the employees' pool party. Personally, I just did not feel that we had a very good turnout last year. And Ty and his wife did all the work. They won't let you help them cook or any of that stuff. And I'm wondering, we didn't have a very good turnout for the volunteer breakfast. If maybe that committee would think about having the volunteer pool party. Because we already give the employees, they get a lunch. Now, they come to that, because they're here at work and that was a very good turnout. But maybe if we just drop the employees' pool party and change it to that volunteer people and they could bring their families. And I'd be more than happy to help go get food or cook or, because I don't, I don't think something like that should be all put on Tristan, but.
Well.
That's just a couple of ideas I had and I, it's, you know, you got nine months to Christmas, so if you're gonna think about the Christmas thing, even if you don't do the luminaries or say, oh, gosh, Betty, that's too expensive. We could still give them a gift certificate from like Tree Top, three prizes.
That's what I was going to say.
Because we do have a house out here that won first prize.
In Wichita.
In Wichita.
Yeah.
It's on, um, Carrington.
Yeah.
The old Grey Goose House.
Their, their roof is incredible.
Well, I was gonna say, we have a contest in our HOA neighborhood every year. And I think we've got lots more decorations when there's a contest. It gives people a reason to decorate and get excited about it, you know? And so I, I.
Maybe do a city contest.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think that would be good for, I mean, Wichita does that.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I, I like the idea that Betty suggested about the luminaries. I think that's a simple and very beautiful decoration. But I think it would be good for us to, uh, have a contest and give a little prize to. It, well, and I, I don't even know that you need to give luminaries to everybody, you can have you. Most of the, many of the people who live out here know, do not know that that was a, that was kind of a tradition and it's just one that, that went away with time.
Well, I just think we'd get more of the city to do it if it was given.
No, I think you're right, especially like the sand and, and to get those smaller sacks, you probably got, you know. People don't use paper sacks anymore, for one thing, but you can still get them, but, you know, it's.
Well, you can buy those paper sacks, uh, a bundle at, uh, Dollar Tree.
They had Dylan sells them.
Or Costco, but, you know, just to say.
There's a street by me, north of me, that has candy lane and that court, north of me, every single, I, I'm sure a guy made it. Cause down south, when I used to live there, somebody did that, but every single house, they have given them a cutout painted candy cane. It's so cool. You could have like your street, cause my aunt lives in, um, Garden City. Like they told her when she moved in, we just want you to know that this cola sack, every year, decorates up, we want to win. And like, you have to do it, like, don't buy the house basically if you don't. It's incredible. I went to see, it's incredible how beautiful everyone. You could have, if you started announcing, you could have a citywide contest for your street.
That's what I was gonna say.
Decorated street and, and you know, you could cut off for long streets, like Farmstead, say this block, this block, cause obviously you can't.
Right.
But, you know, like that one north of me, every year I drive down, cause I'm thinking, I don't know who made these, but they're all fun candy canes. It's all the same, like next to their mailbox.
Hillcrest over here has the same thing.
Yeah, all Santa Claus.
There's snowmen, aren't there?
Snowmen, I think. That is so cool, yeah.
It is so cool.
And it's got their names on it.
That, that's a great idea.
If you gave six months notice, you put it out and said, hey, in December, we're gonna have a contest for Christmas. That would be fun.
We will, except we've got the Easter egg hunt coming up in March and.
Christ.
When I was in Florida, uh, my friends live in a, a retirement community and so everybody has a lamppost. And I was there Thanksgiving and so the day after Thanksgiving, we begin to see the Christmas decorations on the lampposts.
That's cool.
And they came up with some of the really, really interesting ways to decorate those lampposts, you know? One of them was a snowman, you know, and things like that, but, you know, every day there'd be some more stuff out on more lampposts as we'd go in.
I all of a sudden wanna live very close to Jackie O'Neil.
Me too.
Well, that, we used to do that in my hometown even, when I was a little girl. I can remember that each street would have a theme. And they would get together and decide on the theme and then they'd all, uh, create their own, we had Christmas trees that, uh, you took, uh. I can't even remember exactly how they did it, but it was just common materials that you'd use and then put lights on them, you know?
Now, you guys know you can't enter this.
If we live on the street, we have to decorate.
Well, you have to decorate.
We just can't take the prize.
Oh, yeah, I won't take the prize, right.
But I just thought it was something that was, that if you get it going and get it back and people, because there's a lot of people out here now that are moving out, that they have more children.
Okay, well, we'll bring that up.
I'd like to see what the community development thinks if they would help us.
Yeah, it's something that would build community.
They should do it, but also the community development, Tristan needs to delegate out.
Yes.
Because those people we just put on that committee, if they're just gonna go to a meeting, personally, if I was just sitting at a meeting and, and the chairman's or the. What is she? The chairman lady, I mean, whatever she is, said, okay, we're doing this and this and this, I think, well, what am I here for?
That's why we, we now have a, we just about doubled its size, so.
But they need to be put to work. They need to have a sheet set out.
Aren't you gonna have those two seniors come sit on through the summer as a liaison for you?
One, there was one that came, yeah.
Caleb?
Yeah, he came to last meeting.
Sarah was in Topeka, while you went with me, plus members.
I don't wanna make you mad, upset or angry, but I don't think you need, you should be on that committee. We've never had a mayor in the past that I can recall that's been on a committee.
Yeah, you have. Harold Smith was on it when I was on it.
Well, he didn't, oh, did he come to every meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
He started it for me.
He did start it.
He was on it forever.
But he left right after it got going.
I think he came for a while, but I don't think he came forever and ever.
Well, I was on it before I got on council and had to leave it. He was there, so.
Yeah, he started it. He started it.
She's the one.
I've been on it for years.
Yeah, we did, we decided we're not gonna do specifically liaisons, just.
Well, yeah, we aren't supposed to be on committees, except for liaisons, right?
Yeah, well, and we're not even gonna worry about that. They're all open to the public, they're good, so.
But some of those people might be intimidated, cause, oh, I'm not gonna say anything, he's here. I don't know that, but, um.
Well, there, there are some reasons why we started that and hopefully we can. Phase off, phase off.
But you have to phase off of it or taper off, whatever.
Wouldn't mind a free night, everyone's.
Yeah, for sure.
You could probably spend with your wife more than that.
Now that we've got some new members on there, that'll be good.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's, anything else? Anybody wants to bring up?
I have a thing. I, um, I went, I, I got a piece of gossip maybe, but it wasn't gossip. I'd like to hear maybe an update on the land bank and what's going on with the land bank.
The land bank itself is, is doing well. Um, the issue we're having is with the county. The, the way that Allison interprets the law and anybody that reads it interprets is, is that once the land bank is created. And it's deeded over to the land bank, which you all have done, then, uh, the county, um, treasurer, I think, takes, uh. Takes all the parcels off of the tax rolls. And, um, s- and that's the way it, it, it reads, the, the legislature for that created the land bank, it said. The treasurer shall remove, so that's what it says. Well, at, at Sedgwick County, some of their attorneys, um. Are bringing in another state statute that deals with tax exemptions for like IRBs. Um, and in that statute, it talks about that you have to apply and it has to be approved through the Board of Tax Appeals. And, um, that kinda process. So what Allison and I have been trying to visit with county commissioners about is that we feel that the, the attorney. One of the attorneys has overstepped their bounds and is, is interpreting something different than what it should be.
Apples and oranges.
Yeah, and what we've also done is we've contacted other cities that have land banks and are using them and their county doesn't require any of that. So we've, what we've done on the staff level is try to explain that we're right, that this is the way it needs to be. We can't get their, um, the county counselor and his staff on our same board. So we, so then I've been sharing that with some of the other cities that have set up land banks. Cause I've visited with Unruh, Commissioner Unruh about that and, and some of the other cities, we're gonna visit with their city commissioner or county county commissioners about it. And maybe the county commissioners could get involved and talk with their staff and, um, and maybe get a better clarification. Cause like I said, our problem is that no one else has to do it. Why is Sedgwick County requiring this? And so that's what's been going on. We've, we completed the paperwork. They said we had to complete, we've sent it in. We're doing what they say has to be done, but the bigger issue we have is that it doesn't make sense that Sedgwick County's requiring this, no other county is. And why are you doing that to your cities? That's our concern.
So did someone tell you that happened?
They want more money.
No, I meant.
Well, yeah, that's what they want.
Is this out though with?
It's starting to get out.
This was another, remember, I'm the chamber witch and so I was at a chamber meeting and it was one of the other city administrators. Said to me, hey, Diane, have you heard? And I kinda went, uh. So that's why I kinda wanted to put you on the spot and I guess I'm curious about if you've talked to Dave, how, was he, um.
You did talk to Dave, you said?
Yeah.
Was he receptive?
Well, it, what he basically did is go back to the county counselor and asked him to look into it. Well, then he basically took their word for it, that that's the way it, it is, should be interpreted and then said it's done. So basically, we've kinda done what we could at the staff level and now it's gonna have to move up to your level. If, you know, if you wanna pursue this, is to visit with the county commissioners and.
Yeah, my, my, I'll just tell you, my plan was, um, was I was gonna ask Dave to a lunch. And then with Ty, I could then, you know, let you guys know what we've learned and see what we need to do.
Should we contact our commissioners? Is it too soon?
Not ye- I would say not yet, hang tight, but soon, I would.
Well, because I don't think we should just do one, Dave. I think we need to contact all of them, because they're all gonna vote on it. I think we should contact all five if we're gonna contact them.
Well, yeah, there's no vote, it's just that we, we think that they should put pressure on the county counselor to revisit this issue. And, and maybe explain to us why nobody else, no other county has to do it and that kinda.
This is the county count for.
How can, how can a, a specific counselor just reinterpret this law from the state arbitrarily like that?
Yeah, they could ask for it to be brought up, couldn't they?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And like I said, we've been trying.
I was gonna say, we email them, they could ask for it to be something that they.
Yeah, and what we've been doing is, you know, you try, you try to go through the proper channels as you move along and so Allison has been. Visiting with the attorney that's handling this at the county, it's, uh, it's not the county council, it's one of his assistants. Been getting nowhere and of course, keep in mind, she represents, yeah, represents Hayesville and us. And then, um, so she's gotten nowhere, so she told me about it and I said, okay, let me see what I can figure out. So I contacted the other cities, said, does anybody have any problems? And I also went, uh, to the state level and said, okay, you cities that have land banks. Let me know who you are. And so then I contacted them and said, do you have to do any of this? And sent them their, what their interpretation is on the statute. And they're all saying, no, we don't have to do any of that.
What's the league saying?
What's that?
The league.
The league, we contacted the league and they, they didn't take any stands on it. They said, we'll visit with somebody that's got a, a.
Such a new thing.
Yeah, it's really new and.
It's not really new, because that's the way farm ground used to always.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, well, we've only, I mean, we're new to land.
Yeah. Well, are the other cities in Sedgwick County, have any of them done this before?
Um, there's, there's, yeah, the, us in Hayesville are the first. Wichita's looking at putting one together. Park City, I think they put one, they just wanted to do it.
They just did.
Yeah, and so, and, and the city manager from, um, from Wichita wanted to know, he contacted me, said, what's the issues you're having? Cause we, we're interested as well. So we've done everything. So, we've done everything we can, it's out of, now we're gonna have to, that's what Allison and I were talking the other day, and that's why we mentioned to the mayor, we said, you know, we've done, the staff level's done all we can, and I think it's gonna have to move up to the political, to council.
Your question's very timely, Diane, because this, yeah, we just had, what I was thinking, I'm gonna call-
We need to be updated on that immediately, as soon as you find out.
That's why I want to have lunch with our county commissioner ASAP, and then, so we can come back, let you guys know, we, we all knew something.
And I mean, we, I, I know, certainly have known many of them, you know, a long time, and can place a call and place a little pressure. Um, and then the new, um, county administrator, what is he called?
Mike Shoals.
Yeah, I mean, he lives out here.
That's right, and I know them really well.
Well, you know, I would just like to ask that, whenever something like this comes up, it's better if you aren't caught flat-footed like Diane was, not knowing what was going on.
Sure.
So, it'd be nice to kind of keep us in the loop when things like this arise.
And this is all brand, I mean, this is all brand new, guys, we're not hiding, this totally has come up in the last few days, so.
It wasn't that long ago, or what have you, but you're absolutely right, I was kind of, uh, fortunately, someone else knew me and came up, and I-
Yeah, 'cause we're still trying to figure, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it, this is all very, very, very brand new, yeah, this is absolutely-
Well, if, you know, the group email, Ty could have just, uh, and I'm not blaming Ty. Uh, just send a group email, or say, we're having a problem with this land bank, we'll keep you updated, and what's going on, and do it right then. And really, that's one of my gripes, that, uh, I personally feel, that some people know things when they come to the coun- the, uh, council meeting, and I'm sitting there thinking, where's that coming from? I never heard that, I wasn't contacted. But emails are so simple, that you can just do the group, I mean, Ty could do it, or the mayor could do it, or, or what, excuse me, whatever, but-
I can't.
He can't, only he can. He could get in trouble, he sends it to more than two.
Yeah.
But the mayor can send me stuff, which-
Right.
Then, and then I can send them.
Then how does he call everybody?
I don't, as long as it's not-
What's the difference?
If it's not a group call-
It's not a group call, he can't put us all on conference call.
Well, then do them separate.
Yeah, he could send us each stuff.
Yeah, this is all, literally, come up probably in the last week, yeah, last, and so that's why we're, again, yeah, let everybody know, 'cause I'm still figuring, trying to find out what's going on, Ty's still trying to find out what's going on, Allison's still trying to find out what's going on, so then we could, you know, let you guys know, and we're all gonna be tigers, I'm hoping.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna need you.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, you guys are all gonna be.
We all know, I'm sure.
And it was, yeah, just not quite two weeks.
You have to send an email to everyone, I'm, I can't, I can't handle.
Yep.
Um, how many of us are going Monday? Did you need?
Well, I'm upset about that, because he gave us such a short notice, and I've already got a commitment, I, I don't even know who-
He loves a tour, he would give you a tour anytime, he loves-
Yeah, but to go over as a group, they're not going to the Wells, are they?
No.
Okay, we're just going to the sewer plant. Well, I don't feel so bad, but I already committed to take a bunch of seniors, uh, to a luncheon in Carriage Crossing, and I didn't feel that I could call them up and say, nah, I can't go, I gotta go to the sewer.
I actually, I'm on spring break, I was sorry, I was kinda happy, 'cause it's like, I actually can't go, otherwise, I'd be, but this isn't the Wells, this is-
Give us one day, we need several days, or a couple of days to pick from.
Well, this is just, um, and a group can go out again.
Yeah, this won't be the last one. Yeah, this won't be the last one.
Plant there in, at Broadway. This is not the Wells, 'cause that'll take a while to go around to all the Wells. I would like to do that, too, but maybe a Saturday.
Several years ago, I mean, you know.
But it's been years, I don't, I don't think I've been back since oh-five. It's been a long time.
It was when you first gone on.
Yes, and that was a long time ago, I-
'Cause we went to the Wells and then went back to City Hall over there and had supper.
I, I don't know, but maybe a Saturday, if he wants, or, I don't know, of course, you guys maybe could do a day, and I could just get a- I would like to see the Wells again.
Yeah, I've got Peggy and Ramona both said they could, um-
What time is that again?
Ten o'clock.
Are we the only ones that can?
There's no way I can.
From here, I don't know if there's anybody from Park City that would be there.
Well, then I'm good to wait until summer, if you want.
I think we should try it for another time when the rest of the people can go.
Well, you both are more than two anyway. But I just thought, give us one day choice, and then, and it's ten o'clock.
And if you're on spring break, you probably could-
Make it eight o'clock, nine o'clock.
And 'cause you were, have you been to the sewer plant?
No.
See?
It's an eight-killer, yeah.
Well, maybe, I know it'd be on, but if, maybe a Saturday morning after, I mean, I don't care, I'm good to go, but I won't go probably after spring break again, just to tour, 'cause I've done it, but I want you guys all to see it, I was just gonna go, I thought we all were, so.
Yeah, if it's just the two of us, I'd rather go, try for another time when more people could go.
Maybe, let's see, maybe in April, then? You wanna, or?
Well, I don't know, get this in, in the morning, so I can-
End of March, you know, giving it some more time. There's, it's a better time, it's, you know, it's like three or four better, or, 'cause I can ask, I just-
My March is pretty well filled, but I don't have any problem not going to the sewer plant.
Could you go like at four to five?
It stinks.
Usually, at one end of the day or the other, you know.
Right, beginning or ending works.
Can you go like a four to five tour?
Yeah, I, I'm the same way as councilor when, before-
I'd like to all go together.
And I will be gone the, you said, the last of March, I will be gone at twelve thirty.
Well, Ty will get back with Randall, but no, that's not gonna work, I mean, appreciate him at least throwing a date out to us, but, yeah.
Won't be rainy, right? Won't be?
We only have one day of rain in eight months. You're worried about rainy? I would love it if we ran the rain.
Sometimes, in the March, you can get snow and rain, Mayor.
I know, sorry. Anything else anybody wants to bring up?
Nope.
All right.
Have you ever found out anymore about this Catholic Care Committee you put me on?
Oh, no, that, probably some, hopefully some.
I, you know, Jennifer-
I guess they'll know, they'll notice any information, or give my email or something.
I'll send another email. I contacted Jennifer, you know, that was here at the last, and, and she's the one that said that they have some committees, and I contacted her to find out what are the committees, and that, that you were gonna do that, but I haven't heard back, so, I'll email her.
Well, I think she, she was on TV, if it's the same lady, and she's coming up here to City Hall, I don't remember when.
Yeah, they were doing some event up here.
Yeah.
Yep, next week, isn't it?
I, it was either the end of this week or next week, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was in March.
All righty, guys.
Go home, do your own.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, we'll see you one week from tonight.